Good evening, everybody, and welcome to those in attendance at this public hearing. And thanks for waiting. As I said earlier, for those who were on the line, my name's Alison McCabe, and I'm the facilitator for today's public hearing. Before we begin proceedings, I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet today. I would like to pay my respects to the elders, past, present and emerging, and extend that respect to other Aboriginal people present. I'm a town planner and currently a director of SJB Planning, a Sydney-based planning consultancy. I've worked as a planner for over 40 years in local government, state government and private practice. And I've been employed today by Willoughby Council as an independent facilitator for today's hearing. For the record, I've never worked at Willoughby Council or held the office of councillor and have had no involvement in the matter that we're looking at today. Before I get on to the purpose of today, I'm just going to acknowledge the councillors who I understand are on the line, which is councillor Lyn Saville and councillor Craig Campbell. And an apology from councillor Hugh Erickson, who was unable to be on the line today. In addition, I understand most of you can see me, but we're actually in the council chambers. And I have a number of council staff who are here just to assist with the operational mechanical aspects of this hearing. Today, council staff who you can't see are Norma Shanky-Williams, Ian Shillington, Ian Arneth, Tanya Stark and Jennifer Cresswell. We also have IT support if this stuff all fails on us as well. The purpose of today is to hold a public hearing, and it's a public hearing into a rezoning or a draft local environmental plan to change planning controls applying to the site known as 1A to 29 Bowen Street and and 16 to 18 Moriarty Road. Six to eighteen, sorry, not sixteen to eighteen, six to eighteen Moriarty Road, Chatswood. This is land that's located in a block bounded by Pacific Highway, Mowbray Road West, Bowen Street and Moriarty Road. This is a hearing that has arisen out of some specific requests from submissions that were made on this rezoning or planning proposal. My job today has two components. One of those components is to accurately and independently put forward the concerns raised from those who've made a submission for consideration for council and by council. And the second part of my job tonight is to provide an independent opinion on the merits or otherwise of the proposals. So there's two parts to what I have to do. And tonight's meeting is me being properly, of being able to be properly informed about the issues associated with this proposal. And I am going to spend just a little bit of time reminding everybody of what we're looking at tonight. But before I do that, I want to just go around, go through the format and the rules for the evening. Just to make sure everybody understands that this meeting is being recorded. The recording will be available to the public on council's website, usually within about seven days of this meeting. Now, it's important to note that this recording may involve personal information given at the hearing. To assist me, I usually ask people where their property is, who they are. And I will be asking your name or talking, saying your name on the recording as I call you up as well. Given the format as a teleconference, it's important that nobody speaks unless I ask them to, and nobody speaks over each other or tries to interrupt. It's also important to understand that this is, this hearing isn't a forum for a debate, but an opportunity for me to understand individual and community concerns with the proposal. We have today 15 people who are actually registered to speak. And we had also registered approximately another 60 people who had registered to listen. When we started the meeting, I think we had about 30 odd people on the line. As I said, my job today is to listen and note the issues, the comments and concerns. Throughout the hearing, I will be taking notes. I may ask questions for clarification where I don't understand an issue. I've also asked council officers who are in attendance to also take notes to make sure we don't miss anything. I have read the planning proposal supporting and supporting documentation and councils reports. I've also read all the submissions that have been received. And I actually have most of them in front of me. I've also visited the site and walked the site and the surrounding areas. So to ensure that we get through the evening efficiently, it would be appreciated if submissions could be kept to a maximum of five minutes. And as I said, only one person speaking at one time. And that is important. So each party has the opportunity to make their points without interruptions. It's also important that nobody makes aspersions or makes inappropriate comments about either anybody at the meeting or not at the meeting. They're not issues I'm interested in, where actually I'm only interested in the facts and the concerns that people want to put in front of us. The way this will operate is, is I will call those who have registered up in turn, just in accordance with, you know, how they turned up on the list. And I will ring, invite them to make their verbal submission. And then we'll ring a bell at about five minutes and ask you to wrap up. The facility that we have tonight has, there is an opportunity to log questions into a Q and A function. We will look at those towards the end of the evening. And if there are some simple ones there that we can answer, then we'll have a go at answering, answering those. But the majority will take them on notice and we'll try and answer those in, in a number of ways. That may be in a Q and A document on council's website. Definitely in the formal report that council will be preparing on this matter. And also where relevant, I will answer those that are relevant to my, my job in my report as well. So there'll be a combination. So with that, that's the boring bits for the night. What I'm going to do is just spend five minutes just outlining it just in a little bit of detail. And I apologize, but I've avoiding using PowerPoints because I don't, I'd rather people see me and, and I will have the opportunity to see you as you speak. So I find that better than just having a PowerPoint up in, up in front of the screen. And all I'm doing is going through information that has been publicly available during the exhibition of the planning proposal that we're talking tonight. But I just want to use this as a reminder of, of the matter that we are here to consider. So council considered the preparation of what's called a draft LEP at its meeting on the 13th of May in 2019, where it resolved to prepare and exhibit a draft LEP. A gateway determination, which is a document that allows for a matter to go on to exhibition, was granted in, in May 2020. And the draft local environmental plan was exhibited from the 10th of September to the 8th of October 2020. And that suite of documents are the documents that many of you, if not all of you, have made written submissions to and which I have a copy of. As you probably appreciate from those documents, the land that we are looking at tonight is currently zoned R2 low-density residential and has a maximum height of 8.5 metres and a maximum floor space ratio of 0.4 to 1. The zoning of the land allows for a different range of uses than what is currently, what is proposed under the draft LEP. You'd also probably appreciate from those documents that the property at 8 to 10 Moriarty Road is a local heritage item. Now, the matter tonight that we're looking at is the proposed draft LEP that seeks to amend the Willoughby Local Environmental Plan 2012, which is the planning instrument that applies to the Willoughby Local Government area. And the key changes to that document are as follows. So there's, you want to amend or change the land use zone from the R2 low-density residential zone to R4 high-density residential. Amend on the site, amend the land use zone for the adjoining roadway in Bowen Street from R2 low-density residential to R3 medium-density residential. Change the maximum floor space ratio control from the, for the site from 0.41 to 2.5 to 1. Amend the maximum height of buildings control from 8.5 metres to 27 metres. Amend and change the minimum subdivision size applying to the land from 550 square metres to 6,000 square metres. Then there's a number of specific and what you might call operational consequential changes to the planning instrument, which changes a special provisions area map to include this site in a particular area and reference that in a number of different area numbers. Amend specific clauses to include areas on, also on the special provisions area map and change some of the provisions in clause 6.87 as it relates to affordable housing. So those last three dot points that I talked about tend to be mapping and clause changes. The effect of those is essentially that normally affordable housing provided as part of a development is excluded from the calculation of floor space ratio. Those changes that I just talked about for this site will mean that any affordable housing, and this, this proposal includes the normal 4% requirement for affordable housing, will, will be included in the 2.5 to 1 proposed floor space ratio. Accompanying, so that's, they're the kind of what we call the statutory changes that are being considered. And accompanying the planning proposal, which you'd appreciate, were a suite of documents. The documents that were included also included a voluntary planning agreement and a draft development control plan, which sought to provide that further level of detail that would guide potential further development, future development for the site. And those documents were exhibited with the formal planning proposal. Also, as part of the package, so the public can appreciate or understand the potential type of development that may possibly eventuate on the site that would arise from the, any change in controls, was a concept scheme that put forward a potential for two separate tower forms of heights between six and eight stories, a total gross floor area of just over 16,700 square metres. An indicative scheme that included 187 new apartments and retention of the local heritage item, an indicative amount of 274 car parking spaces and an amount of communal open space, which was calculated, including land at ground and also on top of the, the building. It's important to understand that concept scheme is an indication of a potential development, but isn't actually the development as such. It's an exercise of testing controls and, and providing information for the public to actually be able to understand the form and nature of potential development on that site. So that concept scheme is not what gets approved if, if this is to go forward because that, the detail in that scheme would be the subject of a future development application if this matter was to proceed. The other kind of key issue that is also being considered and put forward in, as, as part of the broader package is to deal with the traffic mitigation measures. And one of those is to provide a left-in, left-out turn restrictions for traffic coming in and out of Bowen Street and Mowbray Road West. So that is a matter that is also in consideration as part of this planning proposal. So I know that was a little bit long, but I just think this is information that has been out in the public. And I think for tonight, it's just important to ensure that we all understand that this is the package of documentation that we're, we're talking about tonight. So with that, what I'm going to do is I'm now going to move into the verbal submissions. And I'm going to start with the list, as I said, that I have in front of me. And other than, there's no real order of here, other than how they, how people registered. Sorry. So, okay. So I've just been, just trying to catch up here. So some participants have not registered in their own names. This can be changed by going to the participant list and right-clicking to edit your name to read as you registered. This is particularly important for those who are speaking so we can enable your camera and microphone. If this is problematic, we will ask that speakers put their hand up by clicking on the raised hand function at the bottom of your screen when your name is called so that we can identify you. Okay, so we'll see how this goes. The first person on my list is Adrian Bridge. So I understand our IT people are going to get Adrian up. And with a bit of luck, I'm going to be able to see you, Adrian.
Can you hear me? Can you see me?
I can hear you, which is great.
Whether or not you can see me?
Not yet. I'll just, just give it a minute and I'm just getting my bell if I'm off screen. There we go.
Okay.
See you, Adrian.
Yep.
Excellent. So hopefully you were there at the beginning and I apologize to everyone else, but I'm, if I'm looking to my, well, it's my right, I'm actually looking at Adrian. So I'm going to actually look at the screen because Adrian is presenting to me today. And I think it's a bit more polite to actually look at Adrian. So just apologize to the rest of us who might see me. Adrian, you, you might have heard the beginning, you've got five minutes. I've actually got, I've got your submission in front of you, in front of me. So you have the floor, so I'm happy to please.
Thank you. Right. Thanks. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I am a owner and resident of an apartment at 552 to 554 Pacific Highway, otherwise known as Mirror House. Actually was born and grew up in Chatswood West and attended school here and really have parents and grandparents have lived in the area. So I've got an intimate understanding of the area going back some 60 years. I am, submission I've made is really a subset to a submission that Mirror House have coordinated and should be available to you. It's submitted on the 8th of October by Turnbull Planning International. I just wanted to make a couple of personal, I guess, considerations to emphasize aspects of that submission, but I would like that submission to be tabled. And I'm sure you've had the opportunity to read through it. Yep, great. And take on board everything that is contained in that submission. There's nothing in there that I disagree with, but as I said, by virtue of my background with the area and current residence here, I just wanted to, from my perspective, emphasize a number of points there. First one being the privacy aspects. Now, I understand the concept scheme that's, as you mentioned, is concept only, but it, it gives us an opportunity to understand what the impact of a development within the, the boundaries that are laid out in the requested change the zoning application makes. And for, for me personally, and I dare say for residents of not just Mirror House, but also adjoining buildings down the highway, there's a direct impact firstly in terms of privacy. So the overlooking nature of the height of the zoning that's been requested as a, I'm unfamiliar with some of the terms, but as a high-density recommendation going from 8.5 to 27 metres is going to enable, what will impact me in terms of a loss of privacy. Will also impact me directly from a loss of sunlight. Now, obviously at different times of the year, sun's in different positions. So difficult to say exactly from what time, but based on current summertime, it would be from at least mid-afternoon, if not a little bit earlier. And there's also the impact, I guess, from a noise aspect as well. So I'm really concerned with the amenity that I currently have and enjoy. And I feel privileged, but I also feel that it's a right to, to have the amenity, to have privacy. And that's visual and noise privacy, as well as the opportunity to enjoy natural sunlight in the way that we have west-facing balconies and mine's actually north-west-facing balconies. So it's not just, not just Bowen Street, but it's also the Moriarty Street. Change in zoning that will impact me. So of that score from a personal impact, I firmly believe that 27 metres is unconscionable and that I can understand that there's a desire and certainly we see it up and down the highway to, to have medium-density build in that corridor. But I would, my recommendation, my submission in this basis is to say high-density really should be confined within the precinct directly around the Chatswood Station in that precinct. And perhaps medium-density would be more appropriate for this area, which leads into the second point that I have, which is to do with density and aesthetics, because the visual impact of the request to, to for the 27 metres and the, the density associated with that is very out of character with this area. It's very out of character with the built structures that are in place currently in Bowen Street. Appreciate that heritage building on Moriarty will be retained in some aspect. But once again, it's out of character with the buildings on the opposite side of Moriarty Street. And it will lead, I feel, to a precedent being set, which will impact other parts of the area. So moving back from the highway down Mowbray Road, I feel that moving to high-density in this particular zoning request will undoubtedly over time lead to an encroachment of, of high-density requests further away from the highway and totally ruin what's been, over time, a very leafy suburban area to become something that is really not in, in the character or history of the area. The last aspect of this really is the, the density and traffic impact of the sheer number of people and change to traffic conditions that will ensue from the change in zoning. And I feel that that's going to make the existing residents and existing through traffic, particularly on Mowbray Road, will get to a point where it's, it's just not going to be feasible, even understanding left turn in, left turn out of, out of barn. That part of Mowbray Road gets very banked back in peak hours. And having more people will lead to more traffic. And particularly in times of COVID, where everyone is driving their cars as opposed to getting public transport, that's, that's going to be a huge impact on the area as well. So.
Alan, you've just had the bell rung. So can you wrap up with your summary points now? Thanks.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Thanks again for the opportunity. But no one's really asked for this. And I think that ultimately it's out of character. And I would like those, those points to be conveyed. And I do have a question, perhaps he could attend at the end. Who has ultimate design or decision authority on this? And what's the, I guess, the finalization, the process of finalization from your recommendations? Where will that be going and what's likely to happen next?
All right. We'll hold, hold that question and thanks for that. And we'll, as I said at the beginning, we'll answer some fairly straightforward ones. And we can answer procedural ones fairly easily in terms of where this is heading and who's responsible. But I'll hang on to that and we'll deal with that at the end so everybody can get, you know, get, get their submissions at a reasonable time.
Right. Thank you.
So Adrian, thanks for that. And as I said, clearly understood, I know where your building is. As I said, I've been out there and I have your submission and I've understood that. So I've got no questions for you. So thanks for that.
Thank you.
And now I'm going to move on to the next person. I've got Adrian, Andrew, sorry, Andrew Craig. Andrew, are you on the line? I haven't been able to identify Andrew. We'll give him a minute. I will do a another go at the end if I haven't got Andrew straight away. So Andrew, are you, are you here? Andrew Craig? Yep. Okay. I'll come back. I'll do, those who have registered to speak, I will do a check at the end to see if anyone joins us later. The next person I've got registered is Lee Featherby. Lee, are you on the line? Lee Featherby? Ah, there we go. I can see you, Lee.
With your permission, I will actually decline the opportunity to speak at a late decision with discussion with some people. So to speed the process through, I will
You don't, you don't want to speak?
No, thank you very much.
Okay. So I'll just, I'll scrub you from the list there. That's no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Next person on the line is Christina Hoffman. Christina, are you on the line? Excellent. I can see you, Christina. Can you hear me all right?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're good. You're good. You have, you have the floor.
Okay, great. Thank you. So my name is Christina. I live on Bowen Street, just across the road from the proposed development. And I moved here several years ago with my husband because it's a quiet and low-density suburban back street. The kind of street where children like our child can walk to school safely. And rezoned and developed as proposed tour towers with, you know, 187 new units. And I understand that's maybe concept still, but I fear they will drastically change the character of the site and its surrounding area. And I think that's a loss to both existing and new residents. And today I'd like to speak about two aspects of the development that are of greatest concern to me. That's the impact on local traffic and the scale of the development. And of course, they are linked. So regarding the scale, the materials contain a lot of comparisons to adjacent buildings. And from what I understand, in summary, the development exceeds them all in three points combined. So that's the density, R4 being the highest residential density for several blocks. Then the maximum floor space ratio. And actually, it seems to share that one with the eastern neighbour, but that's a business development. Then the maximum floor space ratio. And actually, it seems to share that one with the eastern neighbour, but that's a business development. And then thirdly, the maximum building height up to twenty seven metres against, again, the highest for several blocks. And I just feel, you know, that'll stand out like a monolith. The current R two zoning is described as an anomaly. I think the proposed rezoning is the anomaly. And the proposal states it seeks to balance tall towers that might go up in the future to the east of Pacific Highway. That's six lines of highway separation in quite a different area. I think balance needs to be achieved on Bowen Street and Moriarty Road. And to be frank, you might me call out on this, but you know, the only balance that's benefiting here seems to be the the developer's bank account balance. And of course, developers seek to maximize the number of units. More units also mean more council rates and owners of the current properties could sell at record prices. There's an article in the Australian Financial Review that suggested the entire site could sell up to a hundred and forty million dollars. And that'd be close to an average of six million dollars per property. In twenty nineteen, number three Bowen Street sold for just over two million. So financial interest seems huge and I'm sure so is pressure on council. Now to my second point, traffic. The proposal emphasizes the proximity to the Chatswood CBD and public transport options. And what sounds like a, you know, quick and easy trip is, in my own experience, often slow and long. The traffic impact assessment is based on data from May twenty seventeen. And I challenge how representative this old data is of today's traffic. In recent year, several new dwellings have and actually will be added along Mabry Road. There's at the corner with Pacific Highway, forty more units and ninety new car spaces are planned. The pedestrians crossings on Pacific Highway are traffic light controlled and bring traffic to a stop. And there are now more traffic lights on Mabry Road. So Mabry Road and Pacific Highway are unavoidable roads to get out of and back into the site. And these roads are already quite badly congested. So adding the proposed number of units, the residents and importantly their cars will make it even worse. And look, I get tall tower, high density cosmopolitan living has its place. And there are many options closer to the Chatswood CBD and residents there actually get the fast, easy access as promised here. They won't. The proposer claims to develop for the future. How and where to develop for the future is defined in the Willoughby Housing Strategy. And the development isn't in any of the three focus areas that this strategy identifies as sufficient to accommodate the expected population growth and to meet housing targets. So really, I can't help but wonder why build this big and this tall here? I think it's excessive and needs to be reduced. And to me, density, height and floor space ratio are labors that can be brought down to reduce any new development scale. And as a result, then reduce the negative impacts on traffic and importantly on people in this area. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristin. That was right on five minutes. So thank you very much. And that was very clear and succinct. And I understand where your building is. So I know where you're located and understand the issues from your point of view.
Thanks. Thanks again.
Thank you very much for that. It's very clear. Thank you. So just moving on, I've got Ying Li, who is our next person who is registered. So I'm just giving a minute. Ying Li. We're not seeing you on the line. I will do a final call out, as I said, at the end. I'm going to move on. Henry Packham. Henry, are you on the line? No, got deathly silence from Henry. I will, as I said, pick that again. Next one I've got registered is Mark Ren. Mark, are you on the line? I'm told you're here, so. Hello, Mark. Can you hear us? You've, I think you're on, you've got, yes, you've been unmuted, which is good. I can see you. Can you hear us all right?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Before I start, can I make two requests? The number one, could you just turn the screen on for me? Screenshare for me? Share screen, share screen.
Yeah, I'm just getting that sorted. Are you proposing to?
Yeah, I'm going to show a few photos.
Short PowerPoint, are you?
Not PowerPoint, just just photos.
Some notes, photos, okay.
Just this is just my screen. You can see my screen.
Sorry? You've got permission to share. So you have, apparently you have to click something.
Okay. Second request, because I'm representing Bowen Moriarty Community Action Group. There are sixty two people to sign the petition. So I would ask, give me five more minutes because I represent sixty two peoples.
Yes, look, Mark, I've got your submission and I've got the submission in writing from the Community Action Group.
Yeah.
And it actually is something that you should have requested earlier. So I think, why don't you just get started? And see if you can kind of cover the things.
Yeah, sure. I will make my speech as strong as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get on, get on and do it. You've got your five minutes. So I think, I think the, as I said, I do have your submission in writing. So you don't need to feel that you need to repeat everything. I think it's worth just you talking of those very key issues that are very particular to that group.
Sure. Okay, I'm starting. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Ren, the coordinator of Bowen Moriarty Community Action Group. Firstly, on behalf of Bowen Moriarty Community Action Group, I'd like to send the Willoughby City Council for giving us this opportunity to express our fears, our confusions, our disappointment and our expectations. And today, I'm representing more than fifty eight families who live in this precinct. I can hear some sound in background. Is that everything all right?
Yeah, I'm not sure where that's coming from, but IT is taking care of it.
Anyway, just keep going. Yeah. Today, I'm representing more than fifty eight families who live in this precinct. I'm speaking for those families, the beautiful panoramic views abroad by a mountain of windows and balconies. I'm speaking for those family, the only one hour sunshine for every single day is taken away lightly. I'm speaking for those families. They have to put their beloved home on the market to escape higher rise invasions. When the first I learned this proposed development from the letter sent by council in September last year. My instinct is pressure in that. It's unbelievably huge and monstrous. I put council lights down and instantly I went to Google to search. Is anything called monster building? The image just popping up straight in front of me. And that's first I learned the looks of. It's called monster building. And I will ask, what does it look like? It looks like a balcony corridor, I call that. Are we building a barricade, balcony corridors? I think yes, we are. Because I'm living in Chatswood, I look around in Chatswood. Now I have a photo of the the development on Pacific Highway. It's a triple six Pacific Highway. This is the new development building unfinished last year, now currently on the market called addressed number two Audi Road. And are they look alike? And personally, I think yes. So I'm just asking myself, is that called design excellence? I think it shouldn't call that. It should be called intrusive design. Regarding the proposed development, we have facing exactly the same problem. I will mention this already. I haven't mentioned it later, sorry. So the other thing what worries about the construction site, the size of construction inside. This is the iron map. That shows the two construction sites. The left one is the proposed construction site. The right one is Westfield Chatswood Car Park. And you can compare the size. The Westfield Car Park is roughly two hundred two metres by fifty six metres. The proposed construction site is about one fifty four metres by fifty two metres. The Westfield Car Park has four stories above ground. The proposed building is more than double the head of Westfield Car Park. By calculation, the activated soil from the proposed construction site, that can fill thirty two Olympic pools. Thirty two. This scale proposed construction project is rarely seen in either residential or commercial sites in Chatswood. Even in the CBD area. Therefore, we think the impact that bring to the precinct is unthinkable. And I quickly go around the properties around the building site. There are totally ten buildings, ten apartment buildings around this new suggest development. This is number one Bowen Street, three story apartment. And there will be nine metres away from the newly erected building. Most sunlight will be lost from morning to afternoon. No privacy on north side balcony. Three double seven over road, two story apartment block, twenty seven metre away from proposed building. All morning sunlight will be gone. Number two Bowen Street, three story building, thirty metre away from proposed building. Morning sunlight will be taken away. And the privacy will be taken away as well. Number fourteen Bowen Street, three story apartment block, thirty metre away from the proposed building. And it will lose morning sunlight and the privacy. Twenty Marat Road, three story apartment block, fifty metre away from proposed building. It will lose morning sunlight and privacy. A balcony corridor will be formed after the new building erected. Number one, Reed Wither Road and the number one Marat Road, two three story apartment block. Thirty three metres away from the new building. The city view will be blocked by a proposed building. Also, the privacy is compromised.
And Mark, your five minutes is up, so.
Okay, yeah.
I'll just give you a little bit, just to kind of draw out the key concerns of the community.
Sure.
So I think from, at the moment, I'm understanding you've made some comparisons with some much larger commercial sites. So I think what you're saying is this, if I'm not putting words in your mouth.
Okay.
Concerned about the scale and size.
Details, yeah.
Just probably give me the top, top key things. I get, I understand the concerns about overshadowing and scale.
Sure.
So I just need you to sum up now.
Okay, I I sum this, sum up with this. Because the time, I couldn't just mention building by buildings, but I just can't count them all. I summarize by this and that's my feeling, okay? For me, being a community coordinator is not easy. The hardest part is not doing letterbox drops and the hardest thing is not writing the letters to councillors, to mayor, even to premier. The hardest part is to listen to people's sad stories. The hardest part is seeing more and more for sale sunballs hanging around the properties. A lady wrote me this, I quote, "In my unit, I only receive sun in the morning until eight thirty AM." After that, my living room is dark. But at least I can see the sky. Having a twenty seven metres high building cross the road, we see, that will significantly reduce the direct sunlight. I will no longer be able to see the sky from inside, cold finish. One hour sunlight and a piece of sky view, that might be nothing for the newly erected eight story building. But for her, that's her only enjoyment and hope. Let us stray away like nothing significant. We fully understand government's good initiative.
Mark, you're going to have to, you're really going to have to finish up. As I said, everybody's managed to do their submissions in five.
All right, my last point, okay?
Yeah, and a bit at one point.
Okay. I fully understand the initiative of improving affordable housing. We are not simply against the high rise. The problem is that it needs to find the right place in the right architecture. We cannot put an elephant in a brooder cage. The proposed development provide.
Mark, I'm gonna, you've got to finish up. As I said, it's not fair. Everyone's, everyone's getting the same amount of time. And I have been, I have given you a little bit further. I think I do understand your issues and I've got.
Can I finish your last point?
Now you've better in a sentence, one sentence and we're done.
Okay, I just make it clear, okay? One eighty seven unit on this new development, seven percent affordable housing. That means thirteen affordable housing units are created. So what, what, what the result bring to us? There are huge, this huge development.
Right. Mark, you're abusing, you're abusing my generosity. I have asked you a few times to sum up. I think we're, I think I'm going to have to finish up. There's just other people who need to be given time to make their submissions. And as I said, I think you've, you've had ample time to put your points forward and I do. Have the written submission. So I think I'm going to call it time on you.
Okay. Yeah, you can come here at this point. I don't mind, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to move on because there's other people on the line who need to have a turn.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So thank you, thank you for that. And thank you for showing us the photos. And as I said, I had walked around the area, so I'm a little bit familiar with some of those sites as well. So thank you for that. I'm going to kick you off the line. I'll kick you off the speaker line anyhow. Just moving on, I've got Farida and I'm going to mangle this Sagafa. I think Sagafi, Farida Sagafi is the next person I've got registered. She's here, good. Excellent. We're getting some success.
Hi.
Hello, Farida. Thank you. Sorry if I've mangled your last name. I'm sure I did.
The Gaffey. No, you've done very well. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. So I go straight to the point. Yeah, so, yes, my name is Farida Sagafi and I'm a resident and owner of property in Bowen Street. And I've been in this place for twenty years now. So I call it very much my home for half of my life. So I have written obviously to the council as well. But at this point, I would like to just point out the few dot points. Before that, I would like to bring to your attention the Community Strategy Plan, which is in the Willoughby Council twenty twenty eight. It says we are a city that is safe, engaging, vibrate and vibrant and supported by great urban design. Our community will have access to spaces that promote a healthy and active lifestyle. So that's my start point. The few points that I will bring to your attention. First of all, that has been now repeated a few times as well is about the character of the street. It's the street that has been quiet, is of course is a dead end street. And that is all called the suck, as you call it. Having two. Having two um big tower there or changing from the uh low density all of a sudden to not at medium, but a high density, obviously, that will um cause uh this whole atmosphere will change and will be out of character with the street. At the moment, the um area has only three uh parking entrance to the street because of the number of um uh building that we have, they're all three stories, that's maximum. And we'll have uh the Bowen Street um side on the left side, they all have the parking in the Good Chap Road, so they're not having entry to the Bowen Street. But um there are two others that they have uh entry to the park, to the Bowen Street. So that's the only really traffic we get to this street at the moment. Plus, obviously, the patron of the nor- Great Northern Hotel, because of the change of the parking status along the curb last year, we have about seventeen car parks spot there as well. Having uh two big stor- um eight stories building there with a hundred eighty seven uh residents, it means it will have a significant increase in number of um cars that they just traveling in. And if you have the end of the street, the um Moishu Road open as well, then you have the again, the issue of a ratteron. Uh I understand that will be only left turn, left out, left in, but it's still, you already have congested area out in Mowbray Road. So that will be a area that they can escape to the Pacific Highway, that will be increasing the number of traffic. And also, having all those residents trying to get to their houses, obviously, that will increase the number. So that will generate significantly greater traffic. My third point is about the impact that it has on the uh overshadowing. And I'm very well aware of um the proposal that has been done by developers about the um limiting the hours and it's only on winter time, et cetera. But that's not the case, because for people who are living on the side of a street, which they are east um face, um if they are on the grand floor, they are already only getting the sunshine for a few hours in the morning. And if they take that away from them, then there is no sunshine. Considering most of people working from home these days, that's really has significant effect, um taking the sun away from um residents. Um so as a, in a, in a general, and if you uh, I wanna wrap it now. Uh there are a few issues there that I consider as a uh problem. And that adds to the issue we had from previous problem with the council when they added the parking spots from the uh Great Northern Hotel to um the Bowen Street. And it's already Bowen Street, it's a parking area for that hotel. Adding two more monstrous building in here, that will add more to the traffic and to the um congestion of area. Again, um one more thing of before I finish, also, I wanna add that um I understand that the other side of the Pacific Highway, they're gonna be significant amount of development, et cetera. But we are not in Pacific Highway, we are in this small street behind Pacific Highway. There was also mentioned to the straight um Sutherland Street and the high rise in Sutherland Street. That building is next to a park, we don't have that in Bowen Street. So um I just want to um express my concern about those um items, thank you for your time.
Okay, tha- thank you very much, Farida, that was very clear. And as I said, we've got your submission, I think I've read some of that stuff as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh moving on, uh my next uh person on the line is um Marky Sato.
Hello.
Hello, did I say your name right? Marky, is that right?
Yes, Marky Sato.
So, okay, wasn't too bad, hello, um we can hear you.
Right.
Obviously getting a little bit dark where you are, so I can
Yeah, um okay, so my name is Marky Sato. I'm living in a five two four Pacific Highway. And then my unit is actually facing to west side. And then actually, I'm in the my unit balcony. So I hope everybody can see behind me what I can see right now. Like a beautiful green and, you know, the old D site behind me. Then um, yeah, so actually, I really didn't prepare the what I'm going to talk about, you know. So I'm going to talk casually my thoughts right now. So basically, I actually agree with what, you know, the everybody mentioned in the past right now. So but you can imagine that, like, uh this development, as in the size wise and height wise, simply, you can see like in the behind my this in a greeny nice view, it's going to be blocked by this height, you know, twenty something meters, you know, high rise unit. So obviously, people are going to um happen a different environment living totally. So I am not sure, like, you know, what's the point, even changing the um construction rules from like a height wise to uh allow to, you know, develop in a high rise building right now here. So I'm sure like, you know, yeah, so the development always sometime have like an, of course, the benefit to access more convenient or affordable, you know, the living wise. I guess that the future, like a development nowadays, always need to be associate. Eco environment, you know, the kind of develop- development. So I really don't understand the necessity of even changing the uh construction condition rules. And then uh actually developing like that height of, you know, the building, also the size of building. So in general, as everybody said, totally the people's, you know, living condition, totally is gonna change the living condition up here. So we are going to have like um, you know, the view wise and then the traffic wise, everything is going to be that way, it's no better way for us, who is living up here right now. So that's my personal opinion right now, so yeah, that's it.
Okay, just are you on about level, are you on a level three of your building?
Uh I'm in level four.
Level four?
Yes.
Okay, just uh just I can see that background from your um um video, so.
Yeah.
Yep, I can, I know where your building is, so I can, I do understand that what that outlook is, is looking at. Um, thank you very much for taking the time, uh that's, that was very clear in terms of how um this change in planning controls will potentially uh impact upon your unit. So that's um very clear.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um next person who's on the list is uh Dylan Tan. Dylan, are you on the line? Apparently not, I'm getting a no. I'll do a call out at the end. Uh next person I have uh registered is Matthew Turner. And Matthew, I'm sure you're on the line.
Hello, yes.
Hello.
Hello, can, am I?
I, yep, I can see you, excellent, you have the floor, Matthew, go for it.
All right, thanks. Um so my name's Matthew, I live uh in an apartment block, uh so uh one Witten Road. So that's just north of the proposed uh development. So and so from my perspective, um it's not a, my concern isn't in uh around uh the sunlight, because obviously I'm on to the north of the development. Um it's not a privacy concern either, because my apartment thankfully fa- faces north, so that's not my concern. Uh mine's traffic related, so um the, I guess the issue is gonna be, I feel is that um with the the way that the roads work in that area, anyone who's gonna be heading north uh or west from uh that apartment block is not gonna be heading out Mowbray Road. They're gonna be heading either down Moriarty or up uh Witten Road. Um and so I, and those streets, and particularly Witten Road, um they're quite narrow streets. So I guess my concern is anyone heading north, anyone heading west, um that's gonna be quite a lot of traffic in those streets, um which then, I guess the streets aren't really designed for. Um anyone hitting south towards Lane Cove will likely also not head out onto Mowbray Road. Because from a, from Mowbray Road, if if it's a left out, then obviously you can't turn right to go to uh Lane Cove. And then you can't turn right onto the Pacific Highway from Mowbray Road. So again, anyone heading towards Lane Cove is gonna head north around Witten Road, then down Sutherland, down Good Chap. Um so that's just gonna cre- create quite a lot of traffic uh in that area. Um and so I'm, so I've got a two year old boy, uh we go to the park quite a lot across the road, so Sutherland Park. Um and that's quite a popular park for the kids in the area. If you go there at three o'clock, four o'clock in the afternoon, it's quite packed with kids. Um so having quite a lot of traffic around that area concerns me, I guess. Um that park isn't fenced on all sides, so the south side is fenced, but um the north side and most of the west side is not fenced. And so, you know, I'm frequently chasing my two year old as he's spotted a turkey or something. Um and so I just worry that, you know, he'll run out onto Witten Road. Um and if there's a lot of traffic, um then that worries me. Uh and then also I see sort of, you know, at nine in the morning and three in the afternoon, this is just a stream of kids coming back from school uh all along that area. Um and so, yeah, that's essentially uh my concern is just the traffic. Um so from what I understand, they won't be opening Bowen Street north. So currently it's a cul-de-sac, I believe it's meant to stay a cul-de-sac. But I believe that the car park underneath will have entries both ways, which means potentially all two hundred odd residents might be leaving, you know, north onto Moriarty and then up Witten Road. And so um yeah, it's just that traffic increase which is really um playing on my mind a bit.
Mm-hmm. All right, well, that's, that's pretty clear, and I've, I've got a map in front of me, so I understand where, where you are in terms of Witten Road and you, you're just a little bit further north of the
Yeah.
of the development, but I have been, I did walk up to Sutherland Park, so I do
Right, yeah.
Do know what you're talking about.
But then, I guess with, when you're heading anywhere west, so you know, heading down towards um Lane Cove or being on that kind of area, the standard way people drive would be, um yeah, so down Sutherland, down Good Chap. And then you would turn right onto Mowbray Road from Good Chap. Um and that can be a shambles, you can be waiting there forever trying to turn right. Um and uh yeah, so it's a disaster, but it's, or already it's a disaster, and it's only gonna increase. Because there's no way for the people of these residents to head uh west down Mowbray Road without going around that way.
Okay, so it's how people are gonna use the local road system with
Yeah.
any further development. And ha- having in mind that Bowen Street is already restricted in terms of access to Moriarty Road and, and further restrictions under Mowbray Road. But I've noted, yeah, noted the, the nature of the um proposed accesses to the development that would allow for access to Bowen and Moriarty Road from the development as well.
Hmm.
Okay, that's good, your five minutes is just about, it's up, so, but clear, sharp, to the point, thank you, great. The next person I've got on the uh list is Dan Yu. Yep. Hello, this is Got you, is that you, Dan?
Yep.
Excellent.
That my radio, thank you.
Ah, good, can see you.
Yeah.
Okay, you've, you've got, you've got the floor.
Okay, thank you, I might share my screen with you. I um, okay, uh my name is Dan Yu, and I'm a resident and owner of uh uh number twenty Moriarty Road.
Yep.
So right on the dead end, next to the new building, very close. So that's why I wanna show the uh some pictures I got from uh
Yep, I just think we're allowing you to share the screen. I've, I know where your building is.
Mm-hmm.
And I've got your um letter as well.
Yeah, so on the screen, we write next to, this is our building.
Yep.
We have probably the uh most impact from this monstrous building, like all the previous speaker uh talk about. And I have several questions regarding, see, the setback on this plan. It didn't clearly indicate the setback from the that uh building number eight to the border. And at the moment, the the we, the end of Bowen Street is about five point seven meters from the, the council aerial map. See, here to there is five point seven. So I don't know why we don't have any uh clear indication for this. And that will have a significant impact to, to our privacy, our sunlight, because we, our balcony, which I'm on, is facing east. So this will have a direct uh direct impact to uh to our apartment, which is on the uh first floor. And also, I have uh questions, I mean, you have mentioned that before, the the dead end is not going to um uh to be removed, is not going to open. And but on the, on this um uh planning uh drawing, there is a footpath just right cut through our um gardens. There is no footpath at the moment, the footpath and at our um entrance of our building to the car park.
Mm-hmm.
So that's another question of mine. Also, I said, previous speaker mentioned that um uh the Bowen Street as a dead end, our car park entrance is not on car Moriarty, is on the Bowen Street. So if we wanna go to, go out, that's the only way to go. So if we wanna go to the uh Mowbray West, say, go to Lanko, go to McQuarrie Park, we have to go around, after the new plan in place, we have to go around, come back to Moriarty or, and Witten Road. And also, uh I would like to um uh to mention the, the tree on Moriarty Road. We would like to, we have very nice um thick tree lined on both side of the Moriarty Road. So I would like to keep those trees there.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's, that's all for me, because all the other people has mentioned the, the, the traffic, the sunlight and the uh the building height, so I won't repeat, but I fully support their point.
So you're, you're, you, you, you share, as I understand, you share similar concerns in, in respect to traffic and
Yeah.
um access to sunlight and
Yeah.
scale.
Mm-hmm.
How, how big, how big the building is?
Yes.
Or how big, sorry, how big a potential building is?
Yeah, the potential building and the height as well.
All right, okay, well, you've, you've asked one or two questions about some detail on the plan, so we're gonna, we'll take those on notice.
Mm-hmm.
Um that we will be able to um provide an answer to those, but we'll
Okay, thank you.
what we might do is just make sure we get those right, rather than trying to answer them on the run.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, that's all you wanna say? So I, I, I'm, I'm very familiar with your Okay, um, thank you. And that's all you wanna say? So, and, and, I'm, I'm very familiar with your driveway. We walked past it. So, thanks, Dan. Uh, next person I've got registered is, uh, Clover Piera. Clover Piera. One more yell out for Clover Piera. Are we getting towards the end? So I'll get the last of the ones on my list, and then I'll go around again to see if anyone else has joined. Um, next person on my list is, I've got, um, Murray Donaldson and Madonna Locke. So, um, Murray and Madonna, I think you're together, as I understand. So you're there on mute.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, uh, for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the proponent, Platoon Property Group. Um, today, my name's Murray Donaldson, and I'm a Director of Planning at Ervis, and I'm joined today by Madonna Locke, who's a Director of Design and an urban design expert. Um, we would like to share a screen.
Mm-hmm. Done. It's all organised, so. So, yeah, there you go.
I assume you can see my screen there?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. So, um, today, uh, we'd just like to briefly run through, um, the, uh, strategic merits of the proposal as we see them. Um, urban design peer review that was done, um, during the process of preparing the planning proposal, uh, to give consideration to the local context, uh, how the proposal, a- as we see it, has taken into consideration in its environmental impacts, and to conclude with, um, what traffic upgrades have been, um, recommended, uh, that has commensurate with the density of the development proposed. We have assessed, um, and, and come to the view that the site meets the criteria for accommodating housing growth as outlined in the local council housing strategy, being that the site is zoned R2, but is surrounded by R3 medium density and adjacent to the B5 business development zoned land. The B5 zone adjacent to the site was identified as having the capacity for housing growth, but was not sort of investigated in any great further detail as one of the local, um, centres that were identified, um, in the local housing strategy. And I make the point that the council offices are supportive of the proposed, uh, for high-density zoning. The site's also located in the context of the Pacific Highway corridor, and council's recommendations around a B4 mixed-use zone to the east on the Pacific Highway, which uh, recommended a maximum height of fifty-three metres. Um, as well as we understand, planning proposal, uh, but is being progressed in that, in that location, um, at six hundred and twenty-nine Pacific Highway for high-density housing as well. Um, just to, um, summarise, those, I have two, two images. One image on the left is the local strategic planning statement, the image, um, around where council identifies as focus areas for housing in this part of Willoughby. And as you can see, the site is surrounded by focus areas, one being the medium-density zone, um, where council sought to, uh, accommodate additional housing within the capacity that the control's had for that area, and also, um, strategically, um, the expansion of the Chatswood CBD south towards Mowbray Road, you can see in a mauve colour. So you can see here that, um, in our view, the proposal is in keeping with council's focus areas for more housing. Um, on the left, oh, sorry, on the right-hand side is the CBD strategy recommended heights to the east. As you can see, the east of, uh, our site in question, um, is a yellow colour, which is the fifty-three metre height limit. So it's showing the site in context of these focus areas for growth. Locational attributes of the site, um, in many respects are actually better located than, uh, the seven, um, business zone, uh, centres or local centres that council chose to select as areas for housing growth. Um, we make the point that the built form controls for the site are within the existing range of built form controls in the R4 zone in other parts of the LGA. Um, we may also make the point that there are an appropriate transition that's been provided by this development, um, because the site, um, is adjacent at the five zoning. Um, and, um, while it has a similar, it's the same FSR, um, the transitional is achieved through the provision of, um, generous setbacks and landscaped areas. Um, the resulting book, book form outcomes that we believe are in keeping with the local context. And the proposal incorporates a number of design elements that, um, which demonstrate a contextual and place-based approach, which, um, uh, in our view, have been improved through this urban design peer review that was undertaken. At this stage, I'll hand over to Madonna, um, Madam Chair, to, um, run through some of those more specific elements of the design and how we've approached that.
Thanks. Right, yeah, I'm just giving you a warning, Madonna. You better be very succinct, because you've just done your five minutes. So, kind of, um, a lot of, a lot of this is, is that I've got this in the, the document. So probably just kind of key points at this stage as to how you've responded to character, perhaps.
Will do. So, um, my review of the, um, initial scheme, um, following council's feedback, um, tested it against, um, three key issues. The state and local policies for residential amenity, um, the local and immediate context, including plans for the future context. Um, and this was to ensure that we had a response that actually met that context. Um, this diagram just shows that. And the, um, resulting outcomes have identified, um, a number of key changes, which is increases to the, um, site, um, setbacks to make sure that they're in keeping with the guidance prepared for residential amenity, additional stepping and changes to the massing of the building, um, to address any, um, impacts from environmental impacts, including shadowing, to make sure, again, that we're in keeping with the guidelines for residential amenity. Um, and finally, I guess, um, this is just a quick summary. Um, there's some significant, um, additional areas of landscape, um, above the minimum requirements of twenty-five percent, so we achieve thirty-three percent. Um, traffic upgrades have been commensurate with the traffic demands, um, and the heritage items have been retained and protected, noting that, um, Heritage New South Wales consider this to be a positive, um, heritage outcome. Um, finally, a site-specific DCP is prepared in consultation with council, um, and this will be, um, um, alongside a design quality review at the DA stage.
But, Madam Chair, just in conclusion, uh, we just wanna touch on the traffic upgrades. Um, there's been detailed traffic studies that have been undertaken. Um, the proposal will, um, result in an additional forty-three trips per hour in the peak morning and evening, um, out of the hundred and eighty-seven dwellings proposed. Um, it's been reviewed by Transport for New South Wales and council, and have, which have assessed that there won't be any detrimental impact on the surrounding road network, um, with the provision of upgrades, um, which have been, um, mentioned already through this evening, with the proposed left-in, left-out arrangement of Mowbray Road and Bowen Street intersection. Um, the access arrangements, um, um, remain, um, to, to, to Bowen, um, between Bowen Road, uh, Moriarty Road and Bowen Street for pedestrians and cyclists. Finally, and finally, um, the, um, a- as you mentioned, a VPA has been put forward, which includes, um, contributions towards local, um, uh, active transport, bicycle paths and public domain upgrades. Thank you very much. That ends the question. Thank you for the line.
All right, thank, thank you, Murray and Madonna for that. Um, as I said, that's succinct, and a lot of that, um, information I do have in the, in the documentation, so I'm across that as well. So thank you very much. Um, now, that's at the list, uh, in the end of the list. I'm gonna go back through to the top to see whether I've got any of the people who I, who weren't originally online. So just, you, you think there's anyone? Okay, I'm just gonna go from the top anyhow. Um, Andrew Craig, are you here? No. Um, Ying Lee? Henry Patton? And I understand Dylan Tan. Dylan's on the line now, is he? Maybe not anymore. Are they there or dropped out? Um, and I'll just go call out the last one, which was Clover Piera. I'm just waiting for, see if we can get Dylan Tan back on the line. They were here a little bit earlier, so we'll just hang, hang around for that. Ah, Dylan, got you. How are you?
Yeah, that's a good.
Um, you might not have been on the line for our opening comments. Have you not long joined?
Um, I just joined, yeah.
Okay, right, yeah, well, just saying, okay, so you know, this, this meeting's getting recorded. Um, you registered to speak, so
Yeah.
I'm not gonna go back through what we're, what the meeting's about, so I know that you know it's about the draft LEP that's been considered for some changes, um, for the property in Bowen Street. Um, everybody's had, um, five minutes and a little bit more, so you've got the five minutes to actually make your presentation.
Uh, actually, my one is gonna be very short. I think most of the, um, participants have already commented on the traffic impact.
Mm-hmm.
And that's gonna be my major concern. Yeah. Because I actually, uh, I currently fund Good Chat Road, which is one street behind.
Yep.
And then I know how busy the traffic can be during the pick hour, even off pick hours. Sometimes it's really hard to get, uh, out from Mowbray Road, uh, sorry, from Good Chat Road into Mowbray Road. So by increasing another hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty-six car parks, um, of the pro- as a result of the project, um, I can imagine how much traffic that will be added to, um, the, the, the road intersections, um, especially from Bowven, uh, is a Bowven Street, yeah, in, to, back to, uh, Mowbray Road. Um, it's gonna be quite troublesome for the neighbourhood, I guess. That's my major concern.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's clear. I don't know where Good Hope Street, uh, Good Hope Road is, so I can, I've got a
Oh, chat road.
Good cho- good, good chat, not Good Hope, good chat.
Right.
Um, that's okay. Yeah, so I do understand where that is. Um, so we're given that, that's where, that's where you're, um, living, so your main concern is, is, is the traffic and potential traffic.
And that's also the opinions, um, of my neighbours as well, of the same block. So they just want me to basically send them on their behalf.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, that's pretty clear. That's good.
Thank you very much, Council.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Right, so everybody, we're at the end of the list of, um, people who have registered to speak. And, um, as you've seen, we've been taking notes, and as I've probably said throughout the, the evening, I do have everybody's written submissions. So just a reminder, I've got two, there's two parts to the job for me, uh, moving on from here, is to actually, as I said, accurately and independently put forward the concerns that have been raised by those who have written submissions, in addition to those, to the verbal submissions today, for the consideration by council in, in, when they, um, come to consider this matter. But also, because I have, um, a planning background and planning expertise and, uh, have experience in these types of development, council has also asked for my independent opinion on the merits or otherwise of the proposal. So my report will, um, take, uh, the two parts to it. So where we're going from here is that, uh, arising from this evening and the brief that council has given me is I will be preparing a report on the public hearing and forwarding that to council in, in the next two weeks. Um, that report is then required to be a public document within four days after I have submitted that to council. So that will be made public by placing that my report with nothing, council won't have done anything with it, um, on the website, um, in the, uh, for, for those of you who wish to, to read it. Um, council's job is then to gather up all the, the information and consider the submissions and consider the various reports and the documents that have, um, uh, come together to, to formulate this planning proposal and prepare a report on the matter. And that report, um, is, uh, anticipated to come before the, uh, full council in a public meeting, um, around April, May, in April or May of this year. Um, as people who have, uh, formally written in, um, and, uh, raised either concerns one way or the other, or, or some of you may have, have supported the proposal, anybody who is, um, has made a written submission uh, will be advised in the normal course of when that report is, um, uh, when that meeting will be and how you access that, uh, report, uh, to the, to the councillors. Um, now, I had said at the beginning of the evening that, um, there were, um, some, a, a few questions. I'm just looking at the list. I think I've answered the one about where we're going in terms of reporting. So as I said, I've gotta do my report. It's totally independent. It will then be something that council will consider in their broader consideration of all of the matters associated with this planning proposal. Um, there were some specific questions about some setbacks in relation to twenty, um, Bowen Street and some setbacks on the plan. So I think we'll take those on notice and, and get those, um, de- detailed, um, specifically and provide an answer to that. And similarly, um, we'll, uh, um, a- answer the, well, I think the answer to the, the link between, um, Bowen Street and Moriarty Road is there's no, that will remain as a pedestrian and cycleway only. That's not, and is not being considered for opening up to any form of traffic. And then there was another question about a tree, um, or a fig tree on Moriarty Road, so we'll just take that, no, that question on notice. Um, so with that, I want to thank everybody for taking the time this evening. I know it's probably getting around in people's, um, dinnertime, uh, for either hanging on the line, but also making the effort to actually, um, make the verbal submissions. It's been very useful, uh, for me. And as I said, my job will be now to, um, document that and, and prepare my report. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna thank everyone and, um, close this meeting. Thank you very much.